Okay, calling this meeting to order of Sacramento Unified School District Board of Education. And I ask for any announcements out of closed session?
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are no announcements out of closed session.
All right, item 4.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives, 4.1, Discussion and Possible Approval of Resolution Number 3233, Mandatory COVID-19 Vaccination for Eligible Non-Executives Students and Staff. Ms. Flores, welcome.
Good evening, Board President Pritchett and Superintendent and Members of the Board. We can get the PowerPoint up? Well, I'll start talking while we're ready for that. So I'm Victoria Flores. I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And we are here tonight with the COVID-19 vaccinations and testing update. I am here with an amazing team of people who've worked really hard to bring you this board presentation tonight. And each one of them will be speaking to you in turn about their area of expertise. So next slide, please. So our agenda for our time tonight is to review the current conditions of COVID-19. We'll recap that September 16th board meeting where we came to you and talked about those pathways, because a lot has happened since then. So we will also give you an overview of the Governor's October 1st vaccination mandate. We will dive deeper into those considerations that we brought you. So we'll give you more updated and more detailed information in light of that previous meeting and all of the recent directives and goings on. And then we'll dive into a board discussion. So next slide. So we wanted to ground ourselves in some vaccine information and why we are here tonight discussing this really important topic. And so we look to our content experts. And the American Academy of Pediatrics really represents a host of, you know, content experts that we've been working very closely with, including Dignity Health, you know, we've done all these clinics with, and Kaiser, UC Davis, Better, Dr. Kwanah Carter, who's hosting our vaccine clinics. These are all members of the AAP. And they really recommend and have made these strong statements about recommending vaccination for all children and adolescents 12 years of age or older. And really saying that any vaccine that is authorized through that emergency use authorization really can and should be used if appropriate for the health status of that student for vaccination in children and adolescents. There is that caveat of consulting with your health provider and making sure that that student doesn't have any contraindications. But a really strong statement. Next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so locally, we are incredibly fortunate to have really a wealth of content experts. And so Dr. Dean Bloomberg serves as a pediatric infectious disease specialist here locally in Sacramento. He regrets he was not able to be with us here tonight. But he did provide, you know, very kindly provided this statement that you see on the slide before you for us to share publicly. So I'm going to do my best to represent, you know, his words here. And the number one action that he stated that we can take right here is, you know, to vaccinate all those eligible for vaccine, all of those 12 and older. That is the number one step he's really encouraging us to take. He also, you know, goes on to refute, we've heard many times, you know, well, children are at lower risk of COVID. And he really strongly refutes that. He has personally taken care of children who have been hospitalized with really severe disease. And so really speaks to the heart. And if you see that other orange pullout there on the right, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, going back to those experts, more than 6 million children in the U.S. have been reported to have COVID, resulting in over 22,000 hospitalizations and very, very sadly, more than 500 deaths. And unfortunately, those numbers are continuing to count up. He talks also about the risk is greater for complication from contracting COVID than it is from getting vaccinated. We've heard that is another concern. And he also reminds us that no vaccine is 100% effective. However, the vaccines that we have right now for COVID do protect us from serious disease requiring that hospitalization. We're really grateful for him and sharing that. I'm going to invite you to, you know, dive into all of his words when you can. Next slide. So we've brought you this slide before. We know unvaccinated individuals are much more likely to get COVID, 11 times more likely. This is the one that breaks my heart. Unvaccinated adolescents are 10 times more likely to be hospitalized. That's what Dr. Bloomberg is talking about when he said, "I've seen and really treated," you know, this impact. And we know that there is less spread in schools and communities with higher vaccination rates. You know, the FDA has determined that the Pfizer vaccine is safe and effective in children ages 12 and over. And we know that right on the horizon, potentially this month, there will be emergency use authorization for children five and older. And I know many parents are anxiously awaiting for that. Remember when we looked at those decision trees from Sacramento County Public Health and we talked about quarantine rules? We know we get to stop right there when someone is fully vaccinated. So vaccination enables our students and our staff to continue attending school or work. We know that our school-based clinics have been very successful. And we have, to date, hosted 44 clinics. Tomorrow night will be 45. We've provided nearly 23,000 vaccinations. I'm hoping tomorrow we'll reach that threshold. Next slide. So as we kind of drill down and look more locally, so nationally, 10.8 million children ages 12 to 17 are fully vaccinated. That is a lot of data that tells us that vaccine works. But locally, when we look at our county, and this little dotted outline is our district, only 54.9% of our 12 to 19-year-olds are partially vaccinated. That means they just have one dose, you know, or more. And we know that that's a really low number for our area. And when you look at this map, you can see how that's impacting our district as well. Next slide, please. So drilling down even further, I'm going to take you into our district context. And how is this showing up and impacting, you know, our students? So shrinking that view, looking at our dashboard, these are the positive cases that were physically present. So you're just seeing a slice of the positive cases that we've contact traced. Remember that purple box is the total number of cases? That turquoise box are those active cases. So it's a slice of the purple. And we saw this really big peak, right? We had a lot of cases early on. And now we're starting to see it slow down. I invite our community to sort and look at the difference between September and then sort by October. We're starting to see that track down. But we dove into our data and we wanted to look at all of the cases that impacted our staff and our students. So we looked at those that weren't physically present either. And this is one of those heartbreaking statistics. 43% of our positive cases that we've contact traced in our district are in this age group that are not yet eligible for vaccine. So this is one of our most vulnerable populations because vaccine's not an option for them. And we really must do everything we can to protect these students by lowering that rate of community spread, 43%. We look now at our 6th to 12th graders. These are our students who are eligible for vaccine, 39%. And remember, you know, because the rates of our vaccine in this age group in our county are lower, we are still seeing significant spread in this population, even though they have vaccine as an option. And then 18% of our positive cases have been in our staff. Next slide, please. So this was why we came to you back on September 16th, to really talk about how do we safely keep our schools open? And so we presented these three different pathways for you. We've got Pathway 1, which is our current status quo, right? We are doing voluntary testing and vaccination of students. And we continue to promote, push that out. And then, of course, complying with the state public health order we had until October 15th for mandated weekly testing or vaccination of staff. And those are things that continue to happen to this day. Pathway 2, we discussed with you, which was requiring vaccination or weekly testing. So basically, that kind of public health order that we're doing for staff, mirroring that with our students and providing that as an option, vaccine or weekly testing. And then we talked about Pathway 3, which was mandated vaccination for all eligible staff and students. And then mandated testing for those either not eligible or those with a valid exemption. And that's what we brought and discussed with you. And so things have changed since then. A lot has happened. And so I will turn to this next slide and have Raul take it.
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Raul Bolosio, In-House Counsel here. We wanted to share with you a bit of an overview from across the state and the other school districts that have implemented one form or another of a COVID-19 vaccination mandate. And we're going to hit some of the highlights and some of the different characteristics of those decisions by these school districts. We've got Culver City, who was the first district. And then, of course, LA Unified, Oakland Unified, San Diego Unified, and Piedmont Unified. I won't go through each one in detail, but some of the highlights for the board's consideration. If you look down across the rows, some of the different key elements, the vaccination required for students. Of course, the answer is yes to all of those. The deadline for providing proof of vaccination, whether they include a regular COVID testing element. The option for unvaccinated but eligible students and then exemptions. Culver City, and I'll also note that there's a number of different ways that the districts have accomplished the mandate, if you will, whether through resolution or some other administrative action. Culver City, for example, did not have necessarily a resolution, not necessarily a clear detailed board action. But you can see some of the elements there from Culver City, the 12-plus age for the mandate. A little bit unclear, not super detailed with regard to what happens to students who don't comply with that mandate. We move on to LA. For the next slide, please. LA Unified, you're probably more familiar with. And is a very detailed resolution. The students there who don't comply with the mandate would attend independent study. And the LA Unified only clearly is only, at least initially, was recognizing medical exemptions. An important element to most of these, if not all of these districts, is that they took this action, these actions, to mandate vaccinations prior to the Governor's October 1st directive. So that's something to also consider when analyzing each of these districts' actions. You'll see that, again, they applied their vaccine mandate to ages 12 and older. Let's go ahead and go on to the Oakland Unified. The next slide, please. Thank you. The Oakland Unified did have a kind of a very general resolution that allowed for their superintendent administration to kind of fill in the details there. Again, applies to ages 12 and older. And did recognize exemptions for medical and for personal belief and religious belief exemption. Move on to the next slide, San Diego Unified. A little bit different with regard to the age range that they approved and applied their mandate to. And that is, as you can see, just the age group that has been, or whom the vaccine has been fully approved by the FDA, and then at 16-plus. So we will, in some future slides, in future slide, look at the Governor's Directive. So in some ways, similar to the Governor's Directive with regard to the full FDA approval, but a little bit different in that it's not connected to the grade segment per se, but just the age. And again, a reference to independent study there for those students who don't comply with the mandate. Next slide, please. Piedmont went a little bit differently and applied their vaccine requirement through the modification of its policy or regulation. And again, it applied their mandate to ages 12 and older. Next slide. Here's our similar summary of the Governor's Directive that we've all probably seen. And essentially, that the Governor's directed California Department of Public Health to promulgate regulations to put into effect the vaccine mandate for students in grades, for students in their grade segment for which FDA has provided full approval. That is what I referenced a little bit earlier. So right now, you know, you're looking at only FDA approval for 16 to 18, but the grade range, right, is 7 to 12. And so that, these regulations wouldn't really go into effect until presumably students aged 12 to 15 were okayed by the FDA with full approval. And that, because of that, the anticipated date for these regulations to go into effect is July 1st, because it would take some time for those regulations to be drafted and to receive public comment and so forth. There wasn't really clarity around any alternative COVID testing or weekly testing, if you will. The option for unvaccinated but eligible students, as you can see, enrolling in an online school, independent study, or homeschool. And the Governor did direct that, consistent with existing law, that would require exemptions to be recognized for any CDPH regulation that requires a vaccination. Such would require the acceptance or granting of exemptions for personal belief, religious belief, and of course, medical exemptions. But of course, these regulations have not yet been drafted. Next slide. So for the remainder of our presentation, our various presenters are going to walk the board through some of the different considerations that were previously discussed at the previous board meeting and provide some additional information for the board's consideration of these topics. Communications, vaccine availability, COVID testing, contact tracing, independent study, enrollment and budget implications, and operationalizing those exemptions that I mentioned. Next slide. We'll start with communications. I have a brief overview of communications plan with regard to any board action that takes place tonight. Next slide, please. It's a high-level overview. The current plan for communications is that by October 18th, the district will provide various communications regarding tonight's board meeting and the board's actions. This would include details with an FAQ informing community about the vaccine safety, where to get vaccines and toolkits for school leaders. The communications will reach parents, guardians, students, staff, and partner and community members via website updates and electronic letters and notifications. Of course, our goal is to keep our community updated through various channels on an often and ongoing basis. Next slide, please. We'll pass the presentation along to Ms. Flores.
Right, next slide, please. So as we talk about vaccine availability, we know now everyone 12 and older is eligible for vaccine. We know 5+ is likely to be approved, hopefully sometime in October. And then that third booster dose is now, you know, available for those that got a Pfizer vaccine and are six months past their last dose. So looking at March. Americans 65 and older, those, you know, vulnerable because of underlying health problems, and people employed as either healthcare workers, educators, and that includes everyone who's serving in that education realm, as well as those residing or working in a homeless shelter or an incarceration facility. So you know, we have been a really strong advocates of vaccine since February, and we've been going hard. So we still have clinics at Cerna Center every Wednesday down in your boardroom from 5:00 to 7:00 throughout October. So we will be there again tomorrow night. We sent messaging out to staff today reminding them they can come and get that booster dose should they choose to do that. We're also hosting a flu and COVID vaccine clinic at Hiram Johnson High School on October 19th. That was one of our most successful school-based vaccine clinics for COVID. Seems to be a really good location. And then, of course, we're going to continue to work with our SAC County Public Health Partners or any other health partner to host additional clinics out at our school sites. We know that those have been successful. We really encourage our community, parents, guardians, and staff to also vaccinate with their health provider, particularly if you have questions or concerns. And we are adding COVID vaccine to our school-based immunization clinic. We have already started that process. We provide all school-required immunizations at that clinic that sits next door. We are adding COVID vaccine as well as flu. And so we know, though, that for us to be able to continue to do this, we are really dependent on vaccine availability and those partnerships, those critical partnerships. So we continue to reach out. We're incredibly grateful for all of those. And we continue to try to, you know, get more. Recently, we've made a partnership with CDPH Vaccinate All 58. And they've been sending workers out to Canvas areas and really get down to that granular level of knocking on doors in the preferred language to really talk to individuals. So we're very grateful for all of our partners who've helped us with this work. Next slide, please. So COVID testing capacity, you know, this is a big one for us. So currently, we're averaging about 8,000 to 9,000 COVID tests per week. We have two health aides at every site to manage that symptomatic or exposure testing. Remember when a student or someone, a student has had that close contact exposure in school? They can stay in school as long as they're doing that routine testing, so they're incredibly busy doing that. We also have 25-plus staff provided to us by CDPH through a grant. And they are assisting with that routine surveillance testing. Primarily, we're starting in elementary right now, testing out at our district locations for those different departments, as well as that athletic testing or event testing. And again, right now, we are still really dependent on that testing kit availability. So you may remember, I came to you and talked about the shortage in rapid antigen tests. That was a real concern for us. Right now, it seems to be mitigated. But we should, we should just remain flexible there. So as we look at mandated testing for staff and students not yet vaccinated, or maybe potentially with one of those exemptions, we would be looking at providing regular routine testing based on public health recommendations for that testing cadence, you know, and of course, dependent on our available staffing and our testing resources. So I just want to reiterate and reassure that right now, based on public health guidance and the science, which we've been very grounded in, we would be looking at weekly testing based on that community spread. So we just want to make sure that we're grounded in what's the current recommendations based on what availability and staffing we have. We anticipate we will need 30-plus additional staff just to help with that routine surveillance testing. So we are working with our CDPH contracted vendor to provide that additional staffing and that supervision. And I want to add on also the scheduling and the logistics that it takes to coordinate that level of testing at 76 sites, or 76-plus, because we're out at other, you know, work locations as well. We estimate we'll need, on average, 20,000-plus testing kits weekly. So again, we've already started talking with our CDPH partners and providers to, you know, make sure that they are aware of what we're looking at. Right now, they are telling us that schools are, you know, being prioritized, particularly for the rapid antigen tests. And so that brings us a sigh of relief for now. But we know that that could potentially change as well. And so pending that staffing, you know, coming onboard and the testing supply kits, we are, you know, looking at, we could likely start mandated testing for those not vaccinated by the end of November. The one caution I want to make is that this pandemic has continued to teach us humility and that things will be out of our control. And so just like testing kit supply chain issues, staffing impacted by, you know, being sick or maybe even being, you know, impacted by COVID, I just want to say that we are embracing and I encourage our community to embrace that flexibility and humility when we talk through some of these issues. Next slide, please. So as we look at testing more, you know, with the expansion of COVID testing, we will find more positive COVID cases. I just want to stay there for a minute, because I really want to help our community embrace this and understand that this is a good thing. We want to find these cases and we want to track and trace them and stop that spread. We've seen this in a number of case studies throughout our district where we've seen a spike in cases. But by continuing to test and contact trace and slow that spread, we've watched those rates come down. So we really should be prepared for this. We also want to be prepared for the increased impact to our school sites, those tasks and demands that it's going to take once we do, you know, potentially experience those more cases. So this is a mindset, I think, that, you know, we all, you know, want to embrace on this one. We currently have about 20 trained contact tracers. They're an amazing crew of people. And they're really loving what they're doing and the way that they're serving our community. We anticipate that we will need to expand that to up to 30-plus just to support this anticipated response. We are really focused on responding as soon as reasonably possible, entering that data in real time so that it populates on that dashboard. We've heard, you know, from our community, that's really important, and we are really, I'm getting tight on that. And then we really are going to have to manage a large number of modified or even potentially full quarantines. However, I will caution, this is greatly eased if individuals are vaccinated, right? We get to stop right there as long as they're not symptomatic in that decision tree or they're consented for testing. It means we know they automatically will qualify for modified quarantine if that exposure was in school. So, you know, our impact on contact tracing also does greatly, you know, rest on staffing availability and that testing kit supply. So just as I gave you that, you know, plea about humility and flexibility with testing, this also, you know, includes our contact tracing capabilities, both here centrally at the district and health services and out at our school sites. Next slide, please, and we'll go into independent study.
Thanks, Victoria. So good evening, Board and Superintendent. Chad Swites are here with an update on independent study over at Capital City. As of this morning, these are our numbers. Our enrollment was at about 1,153 students. You can see that breakdown by segment with about 600 students in elementary, 147 in middle school, and then 406 in the high school area. We're continuing to enroll students daily. We still have a waitlist of about 648 students. That number is growing. Just from yesterday, we had about another 15 students added to that waitlist. Their parents are still filling out the interest level form there on the website. And, you know, that's affecting our staffing, obviously. We currently have about 32 teachers at Cap City and have a need for 26 more based on the waitlist that's there. And that number is fluctuating a little bit depending on the grade level of the students who are enrolling and at the waitlist there. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Human Resources Officer, Consey McCarron, to speak to our district-wide. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Human Resources Officer, Consey McCarron, to speak to our district-wide vacancies.
Thank you, Chad. And looking at, um, first, we want to just take a moment and look at district wide. So even though we're talking about independent study, we know that it's all connected. It very much is connected to our larger, um, larger picture as well as specific to the site. We know that we are not the only district struggling with staffing and, um, staffing concerns. It is statewide. It is nationwide. Right now, we currently have twenty-nine classroom vacancies, right? That's, that's not all total, but that is specific to classroom. You can see how they break up in the slide noted there. And what I will share is at the beginning of the school year, you might remember that we started with about thirty-three classroom vacancies. And by this time in the year, that number generally has significantly dropped. But as we know, we are adding additional FTE based on the independent study. There are about seventeen or eighteen of those FTE that exist from the first day. So normally you wouldn't see it have dropped quite a bit, but it's not because we're continuing to add authorized FTE to the system. Next slide please. This, you also saw the first day of school, it just breaks down where those twenty-nine classroom vacancies currently are in terms of subject area as we're working to fill. So you could see eight multiple subject. You can see nine special education and other ones spoke down there as well. Next slide please. Now, part of the staffing picture and situation certainly relates to substitutes. We know that there have been um, an increased need, as you can see here, just looking at the data for October first for those years noted on the screen and where we are in terms of the requests that we are receiving for substitute teachers. Now, the increased request and we are, we have many times, um, throughout the school year so far where that we've been unable to fill. And so we have been working to prioritize, to increase the subpoles. Um, and to do as much flexibility as we can, knowing the need. But this just gives a picture and a, a little snapshot for the first day of October each of those school years. Clearly last year was very different. Next slide please. So now looking specifically at Capital City and the current staffing reality. We have, as you can see in that far left-hand column, what is currently, um, there at the school site. The school started with fourteen FTE, um, at the school site. So you can see the additional teachers that have been added, the twenty-one since we started school. And how we're working to fill those. We have, um, the current vacancies of those that are filled, nine elementary. You can see the additional high school, a couple of counselors, social workers and clerks that will be added to the site as soon as those positions are filled. So they're in the process. They're posted or they're interviewing or offers are out. So we're pending responses. They're at different levels. As Chad mentioned, there's an anticipated twenty-six, um, additional FTE that we anticipate being requested based on the need. And once those get into the system, we'll be working to fill those as well. Now, one thing that we're doing is we're not necessarily waiting. We are, um, posting and working through a pool, an eligibility pool. So people with all sorts of different credentials are able to apply to that pool. So when it's ready, we're able to go in and screen. We are doing interviews twice a week. And just a big shout out to Principal, um, Amorin, who has been working hard very closely with Chad and doing two sets of interviews every single week. Each of them yielding additional people to fill in the, the spots at Cap City. But what that's doing is that's creating a bit of musical chairs because most of those a high number, um, really the majority are coming from our current classrooms. So creating vacancies at school sites while filling a vacancy. That's the, the musical, musical chair reference. Um, other things that we are doing to try to bring people from outside of the district in so that we can actually fill some of them. We are looking differently at how we're posting. We're able to, to get some Google support, um, on their job board. We're able to collaborate with university partners specifically around the, um, the substitute, trying to increase that pool as well as get, um, get connections with upcoming graduates as the semester ends. Next slide please. So looking at specifically at Cap City, this shows where those vacancies are. And as of this morning, I can tell you already, this has changed a little bit today. As pending offers are accepted or declined. Um, sometimes we go through the interview process and a candidate indicates they're no longer interested and, and thus decline. But you can see where we're at. It is very fluid. There are changes on a near, near daily basis with regards to the staffing. And we'll go on to the next slide. Now, one of the things that we wanted to make sure you were aware of. Of course, we're working to fill all vacancies during a staffing shortage that is nationwide is certainly very difficult. And some of the things that we are specifically doing, knowing we might need, um, some additional support in getting vacancies built at not only Cap City for independent study, but at various other sites. Uh, we wanted to do a couple of specific things related to outreach. So some of the partnerships and collaborations that we've had with, um, neighboring districts and uh, and university kind of pulling together. So while each district certainly has an interest in filling their own needs, each district does have a need. And so working together to bring people into the profession and worrying a little bit later about which district they go to is one of the things that we're currently working on, as well as, as I shared, right? Going to EDD, which is the unemployment, um, working with Google to get out there some more in terms of coverage. There's a social media campaign that we're collaborating with our communications office to, to, uh, go out there. We're participating in more and more career fairs in different parts of the, um, of, of the city and also virtually. We are also looking to offer substitutes or potential substitutes. Some additional flexibility in helping them get their thirty-day permits. Something we actually haven't fully implemented before with a little extra flexibility from CTC. Um, we are also collaborating to, to host and participate in community fairs. We have one coming up here. Actually, at the, um, at the Career Center, the Women's Empowerment Center. So just a little bit of show of while we are always looking to recruit and bring in individuals. Knowing the specific needs that we might potentially have at Cap City, we'll want to further engage in some of these areas as well. Next slide please. And we wanted to share some considerations. Some of these are ones that may very well result in some next steps and others are ones that are just good for the radar to know things that would be helpful for our system. Fiscal impacting considerations, being able to do things such as cover fingerprint costs or, um, for incoming employees would be helpful. Certainly things like hiring bonuses or moving expenses or teacher housing, longer-term strategies. And we know some of those overlap with collective bargaining considerations. So some of those things include, um, certainly the hiring bonuses, salary placement flexibility, moving expenses. But even things like allowing teachers to work remotely. Um, and flexibility within the hiring process are things that are collective bargaining considerations, but are things that we think would be helpful in helping us meet the needs of independent study. And then legislative considerations. I mean, we are happy that there's additional flexibility with substitutes, being able to remain in classrooms longer than the thirty days going to sixty days, which is helpful. But also additional support would be allowing for placements at alternative education sites. So right now, per ed code, districts aren't able to do that. The teacher has to want to go into, um, into a school site, into an alternative education placement. But allowing flexibility for districts to make some of those placements would be helpful. As would credential and audit flexibility in those situations. And for districts like ours with structural deficits, where we have experienced layoffs for a number of years, um, having flexibility in not necessarily just basing those on seniority is something else that would be helpful because really it's recruiting for positions that, um, that based on seniority, the, the last hire tends to be the first ones noticed in, in terms of, um, seniority when it comes to layoffs. So considerations we wanted to share. And next slide, we'll turn it over to enrollment and budget.
Thank you, Consey. Um, next slide please. And this is the slide, um, we've all, we've shared in the past. It just, um, provides some scenarios in the event we do experience, um, unexpected, uh, enrollment loss, uh, from possible vaccine mandates. And they're the same amount that we've included in the past, the one hundred, five hundred and potentially a thousand student uh, loss and what that dollar amount would translate into. But this next slide is one we, um, we shared, uh, during, next slide please, sorry. Uh, we shared, uh, part of this slide at, um, the budget update that we provided for you in August, following the state enacted budget. And we provided some information to purposes. One, of course, to provide the information on the state enacted budget and what it would mean for the district's budget. But we also alerted the board that what we were seeing in August was that our enrollment was not quite measuring up to what we had projected at adopted budget. Um, we were, we were trending about sixteen hundred, um, under our, uh, adopted budget enrollment number of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and three students. And, um, and so we said we would continue to monitor this, of course, very closely, leading up to the census day, which just passed a few days ago. And unfortunately, um, we're still right about there at about sixteen hundred under what we had a plan for, for this coming year. And so now we need to really show the impact of that sixteen hundred, um, loss, of course, for this year. It, you know, it's not necessarily going to change anything in terms of our funding. Uh, we are under a hold harmless year, but starting in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, as of right now, we are, uh, not, uh, planning for a hold harmless because there is not one being proposed or, or that we know of in the governor's budget. And so I know there's a lot of numbers here, but I'm going to call your attention. We highlighted a couple of items we wanted to, to call to your attention. And specifically, it's the second row that's in yellow highlight, which shows the impact, of course, of the state enacted budget changes, which would have been the super cola, um, some other increases to the concentration, um, funds and some other minor, um, increases. And then we also, um, incre- uh, included the potential, uh, loss in revenue of the enrollment decline of sixteen hundred, um, students. And so in that second column, starting in, in the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three year, um, you'll see in that second row, uh, negative sixteen point five million dollars. So, um, in, in essence, this is going, this would reflect the, uh, loss in revenue, um, to the district. And then, of course, in the third year, it would be the twenty-three, twenty-four. And now we, what you're seeing here is not just the loss in revenue, but you're also seeing the increase in cola, um, that's being proposed in the state enacted budget. And so if we carry that down, um, let's just stay with that second column, twenty-two, twenty-three. And we go down to the adjusted, uh, net increase, uh, in parentheses, decrease in fund balance. You'll see in twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at a negative, they're almost thirty-five million, thirty-four point seven. Um, so in other words, this becomes our deficit, uh, our projected deficit. And of course, in the following year, that increases. And so the difference in this slide from what we showed you in October, I mean, on August, excuse me, is that we've now closed our book. So we now have a beginning fund balance. That's the, that was the ending fund balance for the year that we just closed. And we all know that we, um, ended with a positive, uh, with an increase into our unrestricted fund balance because of the continuing school closures. So that, that's already been accounted for and, and is reflected in this slide. Um, but nonetheless, even with that, as we go down that column, you'll see that our adjusted budgeted ending fund balance um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, drops to, um, sixty-six point seven from what we were anticipating, um, at budget adoption of seventy. Seems kind of minor, only three point nine. But you have to remember that this has a compounding effect because in the following year, then our expenses continue. And because we don't wipe out that deficit, what happens is then that deficit eats away at our ending fund balance. And if we don't restore that, then we start off with less funds. And so in the following year, we still have that deficit plus the added expenses. And so that again deteriorates our fund balance and you'll see that drastic drop. Um, I'm going to call you to the, let's see, third line from the bottom. The adjusted budgeted ending fund balance. If you go over to the third column for the year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you'll see that our ending balance drops to twenty-seven point, about five million dollars from sixty-six point seven. So it's pretty significant. And had we modeled a, a fourth year, which is twenty-four, twenty-five, and we certainly will, will start to do that. Um, you'll see that that gets worse because of course, then you have that, you know, another year added of continuing deficit, meaning we're spending more than we're bringing in in revenue. And, um, and then we're adding cost for, for the cost of doing business going up and step and column and so forth. So just important to alert the board and the public that it looks like, you know, that sixteen hundred is going to hold. Um, and so we do need to get prepared for adjusting our budget in the coming year to reflect the reduction in revenue that, um, that corresponds to that less, uh, a lower enrollment number. So, yeah, and I, I think at this point I will turn it back over to, uh, Victoria.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to take you through operationalizing our exemption. So next slide please. So in light of the governor's vaccine mandate, we know that any new vaccine requirement not mandated um, or not legislated by the California legislation must allow for that personal belief exemption, PBE is what, you know, we used to call it. So we're really kind of hearkening back and looking at that CDPH requirement back from twenty sixteen. Um, before those were removed. So student requests for vaccine exemptions, medical exemptions is issued by an authorized medical provider in California. I do just want to call out that that is still, um, uh, an allowable medal, uh, exemption in our current um, school required immunization. So of course, we would want to continue to honor those medical exemptions. We also heard about that from the AAP, right? Talking about those who are medically able. And then personal belief exemptions also signed by an authorized medical personnel in California. So this was that kind of attestation that you consulted with a medical personnel. You understood the risks uh, and the benefits and you, and they were kind of signing off and then you were as well, if you were seeking just that straight personal belief exemption. Or, um, again, that sincerely held religious belief. There was a place that you could check that and sign off on that too. We also know that placement for students receiving special education will also have to be considered by the IEP team. And that is something that we, um, work with today with school required immunizations as well. So for staff vaccine exemptions, of course, they would just submit that requested documentation. And then staff with valid exemptions would also undergo that regular routine COVID testing. As would anyone else with that exemption. Next slide please. So take a big deep breath because I know that was a lot of information coming at you about all of those considerations. So in light of everything that we've shared with you, the governor's vaccine mandate, what other districts are doing, our local context. All of these considerations that we have to make, we will share with you our path forward. And next slide please. So this is a really high level view of, you know, what we will go into in more detail moving forward. So we are looking at vaccine, uh, or vaccination for all eligible staff and students. And at this time, that's twelve and over. Valid exemptions for medical or personal beliefs, which includes that religious belief um, as well. That's kind of tucked into that personal belief. Um, we're looking at mandated testing for those with valid exemptions or those not yet eligible for vaccine. All really leading and driving to this increased immunity for our SCUSD, um, community. I don't mean to rhyme. And really safer school environments for all of our students and our staff. So Raul is going to take you through some more detail about this.
Thank you, Victoria. So just to follow up a little bit more of the summary of the proposed resolution and proposed, uh, diff- district plan and program, uh, for the vaccine, uh, requirement. Yeah, the vaccine would be required for students and staff, uh, students twelve and older. The deadline for providing the proof of vaccination, uh, first or second dose by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Regular COVID testing, students and staff not yet vaccinated, first or second dose by November thirtieth. Including those with exemptions and conditional admissions will be tested on a regular routine basis based on public health recommendations for testing cadence. will be tested on a regular routine basis based on public health recommendations for testing cadence, available staffing and testing resources. I will note that, uh, the specific resolution language will be, uh, on some slides that will follow. So this is intended to be a summary. The options for unvaccinated but eligible students and staff, eligible non-exempt students who have not submitted proof of vaccination, first or second dose before the first day of the second semester will attend independent study, subject to the superintendent's discretion in light of SCUSD's resources and the health and safety of SCUSD's community. And recognizing the need to reach agreement with labor partners regarding an independent study program and other related matters as viable in light of contractual obligations and state and national staffing shortages. Non-exempt staff must receive their first or second dose by November thirtieth, twenty twenty one as well. As Victoria previously mentioned, uh, pending any updated direction from, uh, the new regulations or any new legislation, SCUSD will allow for appropriately documented medical and personal belief exemptions with the requirement of regular routine COVID nineteen testing. Next slide.
All right. So looking at our projected timeline, again, I just want to caution us, COVID has taught us how to manage uncertainty. So this is really our best thinking, uh, you know, about how we project and move forward. We are here tonight, October twelfth. So we've met our, our first goal at a, a board of education meeting. We are hoping, um, to start communicating to our community on October eighteenth. Um, uh, you know, whatever the decision is for tonight. By November thirtieth, our target timeline is for, uh, individuals to submit either their first or their second dose or register for regular routine testing. You know, again, this is, you know, um, the time is based on level of community spread and public health guidance. So right now, our testing cadence would be pro- projected to be weekly. And then January thirty first, that's the start of our second semester. So that's kind of really that, um, demarcation line of either being fully vaccinated, having a valid exemption documented, and then engaging in that regular routine testing, or potentially enrolling in independent study. Again, driving us toward this increased rate of immunity and really achieving those safer school environments for all of us. Next slide, please. So we broke this down and kind of looking at these big chunks of stages because we have some, some unknowns, but here's some of our, our knowns. Stage one, November thirtieth is our, our target here for mandatory vaccines or regular routine testing for those with exemptions or not eligible yet. So that's kind of a known for us. Stage two is really a to be determined. You know, we're looking at establishing some kind of timeline, um, for students five and, and older. Um, once that emergency use authorization is issued, but there is really no information on this yet. And so we just, you know, this is a big unknown for us. And so we will likely, uh, need to come back, you know, together with what we do know. We did not want to, you know, get into conjecture or, or try to guess. Um, so this is something we'll just keep our eye on. And then stage three, um, is monitoring and aligning with any CDPH regulations that are issued um, about the governor's vaccine mandate or any potential legislation that might come down. So we know we'll need to continue to track that uh, as we move forward. And, uh, next slide, please, and I'm going to turn it back to Raul.
Thank you, Victoria. Uh, the next three slides, we've taken language directly from the resolution, which is also available, uh, online for the public to read. And we've, uh, included what we felt were the, um, the most important or impactful, uh, pieces of that resolution, uh, for, for sharing here with the board. I won't, uh, I don't think I'll read each, each piece, but, uh, to summarize, uh, the first, uh, section here, again, this is directly from the resolution, uh, concerns that the, uh, the vaccine will be required for all students aged twelve and older, um, as a condition to accessing in-person, uh, instruction. And the second, um, the second statement there, uh, states that, um, the proof of vaccine, vaccination should, should be, uh, submitted by November thirtieth, twenty twenty one, except for those students or staff with qualified and approved exemptions or conditional admissions. Go ahead and go on to the next slide, please. First statement on this slide concerns that the, uh, those who, uh, have not yet been vaccinated, whether they're not uh, within that age range, uh, to be eligible, or whether they've, uh, received an exemption would be tested, required to be tested for COVID nineteen on a regular routine basis based on public health recommendations for testing cadence and available staffing and testing resources. Uh, Ms. Flores, I think, mentioned previously that right now, uh, the thinking would be under our current conditions. This would mean a weekly, weekly testing. Um, perhaps, you know, um, if, if we're, if we're lucky, um, that the situation were to change, perhaps that regular routine, uh, cadence could also change based on public health recommendations. Um, the second statement references the governor's October first directive and, uh, regarding, uh, the allowance for appropriately documented medical and personal belief exemptions. Personal belief exemptions, including, um, religious belief exemptions. And of course, that would apply to students and staff for religious belief uh, exemptions as well. Next slide, please. The first statement, the, the top statement, uh, provides that, uh, for those students who are not, uh, yet vaccinated and, and have not received an exemption, um, by the, uh, first day of the second semester, uh, those students would be, uh, enrolled in the, uh, district's independent study program subject to, uh, superintendent's discretion in light of the district's resources, uh, the health and safety of our community, in any needed agreements with labor partners, uh, regarding uh, the independent study program or related, uh, district programs. And in light of our state and national staffing shortages, which Ms. McCarran previously discussed. And finally, the last, uh, portion from the resolution, uh, provides that for those students not yet eligible, uh, for the vaccine, uh, such as students aged five through eleven, that the, that the board would direct the superintendent to apply, uh, the vaccination mandate and, and determine appropriate conditions and timelines for those students, um, as they become eligible under changes and updates, uh, from the FDA. Next slide. So really in conclusion, uh, in an effort to safeguard the educational health and safety needs of SCUSD students and community, we recommend that the Board of Education adopt resolution number three, two, three, three. And that concludes, uh, the staff's portion of presentation. I think we have, go on to our next slide. Place holder for Senator, Dr. Pan.
Well, thank you. Should I go ahead and begin?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Pan.
Okay, thank, thank you so very much. And again, want to, first of all, thank you for giving this opportunity to address the, uh, trustees, uh, of Saks City Unified School District. And I want to thank, uh, uh, the trust, you know, the board members and the staff, um, for uh, the resolution and the presentation. And I also want to thank the labor partners who also have expressed support for a vaccination mandate as well. Uh, we're, uh, going to be successful when we do this all together. And I think that's a very important point. And I really appreciate, uh, and thank the, uh, all of you for, uh, putting this resolution forward. It's an important first step to keeping kids safe in, uh, Saks City Unified School District. Uh, so just as a quick introduction, I'm Dr. Richard Pan. I'm a pediatrician. I'm a California State Senator. But I also want to make note that, uh, prior to entering the legislature, I was actually the medical consultant to, uh, the school district, uh, working with school nurses and other health personnel, uh, providing advice, uh, on how we, uh, keep kids safe and healthy at, in the school district. So it's, uh, great to be able to come back and, uh, address all of you on this very important issue as we're facing a terrible pandemic, uh, which has unfortunately taken over seven hundred thousand lives of Americans across the country. Uh, but also has, uh, taken the lives of over five hundred children as well. And in addition to those lives, uh, we also know that, uh, children can be affected, uh, it, it not only by death, which is of course, uh, but also, uh, from long-term impacts of, uh, being affected with this virus. Unfortunately, we don't really know, uh, what those impacts really will be. We know this is a virus that infects the neurological system. It causes inflammation. Uh, so it's, I think, as presented earlier, Dr. Bloomberg is, uh, who's a good friend of mine at UC Davis, who's infectious disease, disease specialist, talked about how he is taking care of patients. I've heard from other of my colleagues as well. And, uh, you know, frankly, uh, parents and all of us don't want to see children affected with COVID. Uh, and, uh, and have them essentially become, um, you know, guinea pigs for figuring out what's the impact of a COVID infection. So, uh, so it's very important we pass policies like the one you're proposing to keep children safe at school. And, uh, in fact, uh, I appreciate the discussion about, uh, um, you know, the impact this may have on the school district's finances and other things. But I would make note that, uh, there are many parents who perhaps aren't enrolling their children in school or, uh, not bringing their kids to school, which affects the ADA because, uh, they're, they have concerns about safety in the school. Right? Uh, about this virus. And by taking this resolution, and I know that all of you have worked very hard, uh, in trying to, you know, control, uh, this virus, uh, that this is going to build confidence in parents that schools are safe places for their kids in Saks City Unified School District. So I, I actually believe that, uh, by taking this steps, this step and other steps moving in the future, you will actually help your enrollment. You will help the attendance as well, uh, uh, of, of students. And that's, it's going to have a positive impact on that because parents will feel more reassured that the schools are safe and that the children will be safe at school. As you mentioned, this is, you know, this is a, a very important step and, uh, and, and signal to, to, uh, the parents that, uh, you're doing everything you can to, uh, keep kids safe. We know that the vaccine is, was presented, uh, not only, of course, reduces the chance of, uh, you know, severe outcomes like hospitalization or death. Uh, it also reduces transmission as well. So, uh, right now, because we can't vaccinate a lot of children, it's not approved yet, and then others are unvaccinated, uh, there's higher risk of transmission. That means you are, and I know your, your staff's working very hard. And I want to recognize, uh, Victoria Flores for, uh, her work and leadership. That you have to spend a lot of staff time and money, right, uh, basically doing COVID control. Right? So that's testing, that's, you know, being spacing, all, all the other things that you've had to do, keep COVID under control. And, uh, by getting kids vaccinated, uh, both through this vaccine requirement, but also the other efforts that you've also invested in in terms of being sure that those vaccines are available to the kids, to, to your students, will, uh, will also, uh, hopefully decrease the amount of effort, staff effort and resources necessary for COVID control as vaccination rates go up as well. And hopefully then you can be able to redirect some of those resources that you had spent on COVID control toward education as well. So this, um, resolution is a very important, uh, step. And so certainly as a pediatrician and as a parent, uh, I applaud you for bringing this forward. As your state senator, uh, who also chairs the Health Committee and oversees public health, uh, it's really important school districts, uh, pursue policies like you're proposing here. Uh, we're going to continue to work in the legislature to, uh, also, uh, pursue policies and, and, and give you more tools, uh, to be able to keep kids safe. But this is a very important step that you're taking. And I want to thank you so much for doing this. Uh, I wanted to thank you so much for putting this forward, saying that you're going to be acting by, you know, end of November, telling parents that, uh, your kids need to be vaccinated. You're going to work to get them access to those vaccines, that you're working with your teachers and staff as well, uh, to do that. And, uh, that as the state also begins to shape its policies, um, where hopefully, you know, we are going to be working together to be sure, uh, kids are safe and that parents feel confident that their kids are, uh, both going to be safe from COVID at school and going to get a great education as well, uh, from, from your teachers and, and then staff. So I, I just really want to thank you so much for bringing this forward. And this is a very important, uh, step forward for, uh, Saks City Unified School District. And also, uh, as a, it also expresses your leadership in our region as well, for other school districts as well. And, uh, and so I, so again, I applaud you for, for bringing this resolution forward and, and urge the board to adopt this resolution. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pan.
That's an approach, uh, rather than going back to the slide, I did want to make some remarks that was actually on the next slide, but I didn't want to go back to the slide again.
Absolutely.
But I, I do want to just, uh, make some, uh, brief remarks, um, for, uh, the board and for our community. Um, what I'll say is in my role as superintendent of Saks City Unified, I wake up every morning feeling the anxieties caused by this unprecedented pandemic and its threat to our work to meet the academic, the social, the emotional, the nutritional and other needs of our students. As I've said many, many times, for so many of our students, schools are a safe haven. And I recognize that the board's consideration of this item is based on our collective commitment to meeting those student needs. I'd also say that by considering a vaccination mandate for students, we're taking a bold stand to protect public health. But we must do so with our eyes wide open and understand that there are implications that could impact potentially our district beyond the public health benefit of increasing our vaccination rates. And I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't speak in greater detail about the considerations that our team described to you this evening. I know there were a lot of slides. But the purpose was really just to give more details to the board of those considerations that we have been thinking about as your staff. But before I do, I do want to express just personally the level of frustration that I feel in serving as superintendent, leading Saks City Unified, because we have to consider these programmatic and fiscal implications as we try to conquer this pandemic. This should not be the case. And I wish that we didn't have to face this dilemma and even talk about these considerations. That Saks City wasn't faced with a challenge of a structural deficit. Uh, but based on overwhelming evidence, and you've seen it, uh, throughout, uh, several years here from independent fiscal experts, we must face the fact that we do have a serious structural deficit and we have to raise those considerations, um, as you consider this action. We've heard from individuals, I know that, uh, I hear it as well, who state that our district does not have a fiscal challenge, uh, that there is a way to balance our budget into the future without any cuts to programming or changes to contractual languages or language. Um, and I'll say that as superintendent, I cannot in good conscience disregard our realities. We do have a structural deficit, one that will grow wider once one-time funds expire due to the current loss of enrollment, which CBO Rose Ramos described and reminded us again, and has done so for several meetings now. The recommendation before you tonight, board members, is for students with vaccination exemptions to undergo routine testing for COVID or to participate in independent study. The option of independent study mirrors Governor Newsom's description of the statewide vaccination mandate he announced last week. Our independent study program is already challenged under our current circumstances. A statewide staffing shortage has been exacerbated by this pandemic and Saks City Unified, like most other districts in the state, has been struggling. And you heard it from Chad Schweitzer today and from our chief of HR, Consey McCarron, to fill positions, uh, to meet the demand for independent study. We have to at least consider the potential for increased demand in independent study um, as well as, as an increase in the number of families expressing concern and dissatisfaction with the current program as we implemented it. We know that we had envisioned a different independent study program, and even if we didn't have staffing challenges, I firmly believe that, uh, I firmly believe that this is a program that because it just meets the bare minimum requirements of AB 130, may not be and not meet the satisfaction of many of our families. With a vaccine mandate, we have to at least again consider and brace ourselves for potential of further attrition, which will make our district's structural deficit worse. Families that refuse to get vaccinated may transfer to neighboring districts that do not yet have a mandate. And students may choose to pursue independent study in other districts that have been able to develop a more robust, a more rigorous remote learning opportunity. And due to our ongoing financial challenges, our district is unable to implement strategies that could help us mitigate these serious considerations. Our budget structure just doesn't provide us the luxury of establishing teacher pools that we could tap to meet the unanticipated demand for our independent study program or other programs that we would like to pursue. Again, I just want to say that I wish sincerely that we weren't facing this conundrum. And I will continue to strive with our board to upend these longstanding challenges in Sac City Unified, to continue with you on the path of what the board has courageously done already in new board policies, in the adoption of new business practices, so that we're not in this position for many, many years to come. I want to be clear. And as you know, as you now have seen in the resolution, we are recommending, I as your employee, am recommending that we implement a vaccination mandate in Sac City Unified. It is the most effective means to conquer this pandemic. And I bring these considerations to your attention because we just cannot disregard the district's structural deficit and severe fiscal challenges that we do have to consider and would have to mitigate with even more difficult choices. Board members, if in the future we and others in our community look back at this moment and ask why we didn't take steps to prevent the losses in enrollment, it'll be because we took bold action to minimize the threat of COVID to our schools so that we could continue serving the needs of our students. And I want you to rest assured that should you approve this resolution, board, rest assured that, and as the resolution currently states, I will advocate on behalf of actions to address the staffing, resource and budget considerations that come with implementing this mandate. And I will seek flexibility to improve our ability to continue effectively serving our students even with this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. On here it has, I have a question that says Q and A, and then it has two additional slides. What are the additional slides supposed to be before Q and A?
No, we can disregard.
Okay.
We can disregard those. If there are any questions related to considerations around special education, for example, we do have staff ready to answer those questions.
Okay. We have currently 37 public comments. And I do want to make sure that we hear from each of our community members. If it is board's will, and I have no objections, I'd like to allow one minute for each of our community members. And I know that a lot of you probably prepared. I know we heard last week, you prepared for two minutes. We do want to make sure that we hear from each of you. And we typically allow 15 minutes for public comment. We're going substantially over because we do want to hear from you. So if there's no objections, I... What was that?
I'm just saying, I guess in my opinion that when we do one minute, people get cut off and we also don't get to hear all of what they want to say. So I know we have the, I know that we're pressed for time, but I just want to make sure that that's taken into consideration.
And it is taken into consideration that we're all very accessible. I know I've taken many phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks. And we want to make sure that we hear from each of our community members. So we will allow for one minute. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Shonda Wesley.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I am in, well, my kid is in independent study. And I had planned to bring my kid back to school in the fall, but Delta changed everything. When the new variant started raging, I found myself concerned about our school's safety standards. Unlike the spring reopening, there wasn't even mandatory temperature checks when school reopened in the fall. Add to that mask wearing continues to be inconsistent, and there is no mandatory weekly testing, much less PCR testing on-site. These are the reasons my child is in independent study. And this resolution rooted in science and requiring a safe and effective vaccine is exactly why I will be able to bring my child back in person whole time. The most important element in this resolution is mandatory testing weekly for every unvaccinated person on campus. Without a strong testing protocol, we won't have success. I urge the board to prioritize that immediately for all campuses, even before the first vaccination card is asked for or required. The direction and resources must come from the district to every single school site, pop down. I urge support from the board on this important resolution.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Ellen Yan Wykoff.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Yes, I'm also taking Anne Marie Norvell's time as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You have two minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Ellen Yan Wykoff. I'm a parent of a seventh grader who's a current student at Cap City in their independent study program. But her homeschool is School of Engineering and Sciences. We were unable to enroll my daughter into SES or have her start in-person this fall, primarily because of the Delta variant and also because my daughter and I are also caregivers for her elderly grandparents that are medically fragile as well. All our members in our family are vaccinated, but because of this, we could not risk my daughter or I testing positive as we would be in quarantine and would not be able to provide the daily caregiving to her grandparents. As she's been in independent study, this has been a real challenge. And for the most part, we feel like we've been penalized, or my daughter's been penalized being in independent study because she's not able to benefit from the in-person instruction and the socialization with other students. But that's why we're so in favor of, or for these reasons. That's why we're at full support of this mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations and weekly testing for students and staff at SUSD schools. We also feel very strongly that mandatory testing is also has to be a part of this process in order for us to be able to return to the classroom. And we are very, my daughter is very much looking forward to returning to the classroom soon if you adopt this resolution. The other thing that I just wanted to add that I think is going to be important for this conversation is also talking about accountability, that how are we going to be dealing with, even though it's been presented in today's presentation? I'm hoping that the board will have further discussions or ask for further clarification on how accountability and enforcement of this process of how we're going to be addressing mandatory testing and ensuring how we address the needs of unvaccinated students as well. And so for these reasons, I'm just really urging the board to really, to support and vote yes on this resolution. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Janessa Stewart.
Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My son is a freshman at Rosemont High, and I'd like to express my strong opposition to this resolution. COVID is not like other childhood diseases that we immunize for. In fact, it's the opposite of many as children are the least at risk of severe illness or hospitalization. The Pfizer shot, on the other hand, has some very alarming risks, especially for male children. Current data from the CDC's own V-Safe program that has followed kids aged 12 to 17 has showed over 7% reported side effects. Of those reports, nearly 10% were serious. The majority experienced by males, with over half of them being myocarditis or other cardiac adverse events. 14 children in this program also died. Based on the data from the CDC itself, my healthy son has a 10 to 20 times higher risk of experiencing a serious side effect from the vaccine than from COVID itself, especially since I have a family history.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. If you could please wrap up.
Based on these stats, it's unconscionable to me that our district would consider any kind of mandate at this time. More time is needed to determine the safety and necessity of this for students. Leave this choice to parents, or you give parents like myself no choice but to pull out our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next speaker.
Justine Hearn.
Are you there, Ms. Hearn? Yes, go ahead.
I'll also be using Michael Bedard's time as well.
Okay.
So I support a vaccine mandate for the health of our students and our broader community. Vaccination, along with other measures, including regular testing, is a key element of this most key safety model decided by the district. Vaccinated students can skip quarantine. Universal vaccines will keep more kids in school. Exemption should be made for those with a verified medical issue. And those students should be required to do mandatory weekly testing at their school site. Public opinion surveys are showing overwhelming support for vaccine mandates. And as district staff noted, several large districts have already enacted mandates. Families, of course, will not be forced to vaccinate their kids. Those who choose not to vaccinate can enroll in independent study, which will allow the majority of students to learn in-person safely. Families currently enrolled in independent study and those who left the district due to safety concerns will return to in-person learning. The independent study program may currently be overburdened, but it's not a reason to jeopardize children's safety by leaving unvaccinated students in the classroom. Again, students who are currently in independent study do want to be in-person. And they'll return once we see those steps of mandatory vaccines and regular testing in place. The district should not put financial concerns ahead of educational access and student safety. Please don't let the fear of doing this imperfectly at first deter you from making the decision that supports our students' safety and public health in general. As Dr. Pan said, you're restoring many families' faith in the district and confidence in sending their kids back to school with this resolution. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Cassandra Hoff.
Go ahead, Ms. Hoff.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Hoff. And I have two children in the district. I support vaccine mandates and mandatory weekly testing. According to the CDC, unvaccinated Americans are 10 times more likely to be hospitalized and 11 times more likely to die from COVID. Faced with this information, a vaccine mandate and weekly testing are reasonable, common sense precautions. Families that do not want to vaccinate have the option of learning through independent study so that the rest of the students can learn in-person safely. The unvaccinated should not have the option to spread the virus to our children's at school. Although independent study is overburdened, the school board must prioritize safety over all other concerns. Please do not buckle under the pressure of anti-science misinformation. Please vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Samantha Benton.
Go ahead, Ms. Benton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
My children are in independent study because I feel it isn't safe to be in the classroom without mandatory testing and vaccinations. I've been following the district's COVID dashboard closely, and it's so upsetting to see all of the infections and quarantines as it must be so stressful and disruptive for the children and their families. We need to know if someone has COVID before sticking them indoors for hours with other people. We need mandatory testing as soon as possible. If we wait until Newsom's full approval date for vaccines, we will continue to have infections and quarantines for months. The hospital I work for requires staff to be vaccinated and requires visitors to have proof of a negative test or vaccine. So do many businesses, corporations, airlines, and the entire LA school district. And I know now more. Why aren't we? It's devastating to think that this district would choose financial reasons over children's safety and health. The families that choose not to test or vaccinate aren't following established scientific evidence.
Thank you, Ms. Benton. If you can, please wrap it up.
It should not be given special treatment, especially because this is not a political issue. This is on children's health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kevin Smith.
Are you there, Mr. Smith? Go ahead.
Hello, hello. My name is Kevin Smith. I'm the parent of two elementary school students in the district. I'm here to speak in favor of vaccine mandates and mandatory weekly COVID testing for all students and staff. Science has shown that these measures are highly effective in stopping the spread of COVID. These measures, along with mask mandates and better ventilation, are the least we can do to keep our kids safe from COVID, regardless of their parents' misguided beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Emily Wolford.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight as both a parent and a community member. It's great the district has promoted and provided vaccines, but it's not enough. As we know, numerous vaccines are required for school entry, and the COVID-19 vaccine is even more critical and urgent as we're in the throes of this pandemic. Social scientists have proven that requiring vaccines works as many who are vaccine hesitant will become vaccinated following requirements in schools and workplaces. As Dr. Pan suggested, many parents will enroll students once more vaccinated and they feel more confident in the safety of our schools. The data that you showed tonight shows that 39% of positive cases in our district are among sixth to 12th graders. Most of these kids could have been vaccinated. And it doesn't have to be this way. It's unfortunate that a vaccine mandate wasn't passed in Sacramento months ago. Students and staff have unnecessarily been placed at risk for months as vaccines have been available and other districts have taken steps. Sacramento should be leading the way. We are should be leaders here in this district. I implore you to pass-
Thank you, Ms. Wolford. If you could please wrap it up.
And without a personal belief exemption. We should not be using district resources that are already stretched when people should be mandated to have a vaccine unless medically necessary. I implore you to mandate vaccines solely with medical exemptions as soon as possible.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jody Bone.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Bone.
Yes, hi. It is time for our school board to take the bold and much-needed step to mandate COVID vaccinations for all eligible employees and students as it is the board's duty to do everything it can to ensure the health and safety of those spending their day working and learning on school grounds. In addition, an increase in vaccinated individuals will help to keep our local, national and global communities healthy. As a first-grade teacher, I am anxious for the day I can teach phonics, read stories and smile and laugh with my students without a mask. Mandated vaccinations for eligible age groups and then those five to 11 years old, when available, will help us get closer to that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bone. Next speaker.
Matt Van Zant.
Yeah, I'm the father of two elementary school students in the five to 11 age range that very recently started in the Cap City Independent Study Program. For the health and safety of our family and especially for those in our family that were at high risk of COVID complications, we chose not to return our children to in-person instruction at their home school this fall. We've been eagerly awaiting a COVID vaccine available for their age group, but also a mandate that everyone in their school environment also have vaccine. The exact resolution we are discussing tonight. As such, I wholeheartedly support the resolution. I believe it will be a major step toward making our children safer in the in-school, in-person school environment. As a parent that waited weeks beyond the start of school for my children to be assigned a teacher in the independent study program, I'm acutely aware that the IS program's currently facing staffing challenges and that there's a concern this could be exacerbated with an influx of non-exempt unvaccinated students. I believe this resolution will mean that families like mine will feel comfortable returning to our home school in person, thus freeing up space in the independent study program.
Mr. Van Zant, if you could please wrap it up.
I encourage our school board members and Superintendent Aguilar to support this resolution and give it the resources, planning, oversight and transparency that it needs to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sid Jagori.
Good evening. I am calling to express my strong support of the resolution as it's written. I'm not going to regurgitate stats. There are much smarter people than me who have given you lots about the science behind this. However, I do think it might be a great idea to think about this also as an opportunity to be teaching our- to be teaching our children a lesson about the give-and-take nature of these kinds of things. This resolution doesn't satisfy everybody. In fact, it really doesn't satisfy anybody. There are those of us who want a strong, hard, pro-vaccination, no exemptions except for medical, and there are people who think that we shouldn't require vaccinations at all. So I think this is a really important time to be sharing this as what happens when you take multiple viewpoints and come together and compromise, as well as an opportunity to talk about with our kids and our students about the responsibility that we bear to our communities while we continue to exercise our rights and our privileges. So I look forward to you passing the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Terris Jagori.
We have our next speaker. I'm you?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like...I'm calling to voice my strong support for this resolution as written. Mandatory vaccinations along with regular testing, masking, and masking remain the best way to keep our students safe.
Thank you.
I'm okay.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ian Perkins.
Mr. Perkins, are you there? Yep, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Awesome. Mary Ann Perkins gives me her minute.
Okay, perfect. You've got two minutes.
I believe history is something we should learn from in order to avoid making unnecessary mistakes, especially when our health is involved. In the past, men and women were told asbestos was safe, effective, and readily available, so they flocked their Christmas trees with it, put it in their walls, floors, ceilings, and basements. Turns out that asbestos is an extremely harmful substance, and incurable cancer is the grim consequence of many inadvertent exposures. What about thalidomide, DDT insecticide, glyphosate herbicides, mercury fillings, fluoride in the drinking water, fire retardants in groundwater, et cetera? History reminds me that just because someone official tells me that something is safe doesn't mean I should subject myself to it. As an SUSD employee, a vaccine mandate looms overhead. I'm told it's safe, effective, and readily available, much like the horrific items we discussed above. I'm not anti-vaxxer. I willingly accept the known risks of the vaccines I have already taken, as they have decades of data to back them up, and with this data comes true informed consent. I've already had this virus, and my natural immunity should suffice. Check out the studies of natural immunity. Also, go watch Project Veritas's videos on the COVID vax exposed, and you can hear the scientists from Pfizer and from Johnson &amp; Johnson saying the quiet part out loud. Your natural immunity is better than the vaccine. Now that I have defended that I do not need the vaccine, let's get on to me not wanting it. I do not want this vaccine for many reasons: medical, religious, legal, and philosophical alike. But what bothers me the most is the tyrannical dictates, not founded in science or safety, but in control and subjugation. You propose to dangle my job in front of my nose like a carrot. My job is what facilitates the health and welfare of my family, and you find it necessary to threaten that. According to you, over 90% of our staff is vaccinated. How many more do you need? Everyone who wants it has it, and everyone who is pressured into it has it.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, if you could please wrap it up.
...for coercing our children into this. Stop all mandated vaccinations and testing. Any individual who hears this, who claims to value freedom and liberty, needs to speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, if you could please wrap it up.
If you claim those values and don't speak up, you're a coward, and you're lying to yourself.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Christine Bankston.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Bankston.
Hi, I am the parent of a student of a first grader who is not eligible for vaccine yet, and I just wanted to show that I support implementing the mandate on vaccines and weekly testing to keep our children safe. I urge the board to approve and support this resolution. It is our duty as community members to protect those who are unable to get vaccinated and those who are immunocompromised safe by vaccinating those who are eligible. It should not be a balance of health and safety over budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bankston. Next speaker?
Lisa Wardos.
Hi, this is Lisa Wardos. I'm calling in to voice my support for this resolution for the safety, not only of our students and staff, but for the larger community. I am hopeful, though, that mandatory testing for all students, even those who have been vaccinated, will happen. We know that there have been breakthrough cases and that no vaccine is 100%. I have a student who is vaccinated, has been in school since September 2nd, and has never been tested. And that's a bit disappointing to me, because in order to do the very best that we can, we need to be proactive. And I'm hopeful that this resolution passes to get us one step closer to providing the safest environments possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wardos. Next speaker?
Chris Walton.
Hello, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Walton.
Thank you. I'll try and keep this brief, because I made the mistake of talking already earlier. I apologize for that. I'm a parent to a third grader in the district, and we also have a two-year-old. Basically, as a family, we take the pandemic incredibly seriously, and it's been incredibly upsetting to see the effect this has had on our children and also other children in the area, not being able to socialize, not being able to go and see each other, and so on and so forth. We urge the board to pass the resolution, although I don't think it goes far enough in terms of accountability. And I hope that you do so, that will provide us with a great deal more surety as our kids are in school, and also hopefully will protect our baby, our two-year-old, against the possibility of catching COVID. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Next speaker?
Troy Flynn.
Hello, I'm Troy Flynn, a parent of a kindergartner in SAC City USD, as well as a two-year-old who will eventually attend SAC City Schools. I want to thank the board for considering this resolution and the staff for their presentation. I know there aren't any easy answers, and there are no obvious solutions to this issue, but in a situation where you have a divided public, I think you need to refer to your priorities. As stewards of public schools, protecting the health and safety is one of the foremost values that you should hold, and it's really a precondition for all the other values in the school district. Having...protecting the health and safety of students is necessary for academic learning and social growth, so I would ask you to take that into account. I think the other consideration you need to make is the greatest good for the greatest number. While there may be some people who would have valid arguments against a vaccine mandate, it's been clear from the presentation here today, as well as the overwhelming consensus of science...
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, if you could please wrap it up.
...that this is the way to move forward, and I think that you've seen that some progressive districts have taken this step to make the mandate apply this year and not sacrifice a whole year, and SAC City should cast its lot with those districts, not with the backward-looking districts.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Next speaker?
Taylor Kaata.
Hi, I live in Area 6, and my children are in TK in first grade. I hold the support of vaccine mandate for eligible students and all staff. My children are both learning in person, but they are too young to be vaccinated, and I remain concerned for their safety. The vaccine is the single best tool we have to contain the spread of coronavirus. Masks and testing alone are not enough. One of my children came home from school with the sniffles, even with consistent mask use, so if that can get through, so can COVID. I'm also very concerned that as society continues to open and the masks come off, the spread in our classrooms will intensify and cause quarantines. It's time to step up and take a firm stand to protect our children and prevent further disruptions to their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaata. Next speaker?
Crystal Straight.
Ms. Straight, are you there? No, Ms. Straight is not there. Next speaker?
Gianna Biddinger.
Go ahead, Ms. Biddinger. Oh, Ms. Biddinger, you are on mute. If you could please unmute yourself?
Sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
First time. I'm the parent of a third-grade student currently in independent study, speaking in support of the resolution. With students having endured a year and a half of distance and hybrid learning, followed by a cycle of quarantine in the current year, the district should do what it can to prioritize the quality and consistency of education. A vaccine mandate, along with mandatory testing for those with an exemption, will reduce the frequency of learning disruptions due to cases and exposures. After finishing the previous year in person, we moved to independent study, given the uptick in breakthrough cases with Delta, and given that we have not received a teacher assignment yet, we're totally thrilled to rejoin in person once our child is vaccinated and mandatory testing is in place. Unfortunately, if we were to remain in independent study, we probably need to transition to home school, because we can't continue. So for us, Senator Pan's comments on enrollments ring true, based on our own experience and the interactions with parents who have really been discouraged right on out of the independent study program in the district. Hope the board keeps public safety and continuity of instruction in the forefront as you deliberate. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Biddinger. Next speaker?
Mo Cashmary.
Hi, I'm Mo Cashmary here. I'm speaking currently as the SCIU Labor Rep. I do want to say, you know, this district has been affected by COVID. You know, one of our bus attendants, drivers, Brenda Moore, died of COVID. We also have another bus driver that's currently in the hospital, still fighting for her life. And it isn't just the financial...you know, the superintendent talked about this being a financial issue, but what I wish we had is that we have a superintendent that fought for us to get the funds that we need for the district that our kids deserve. Instead, what we always get is fear about the budget, and then also, you know, a move to push austerity schools is something that's going to be effective. We know that doesn't work. We can't recruit teachers because of the failed leadership of our superintendent. Yes, there's a national and statewide shortage, and it's gotten worse because we try to cut our teachers' benefits. We don't support them. We don't have their back, and we don't work collaboratively with them and all of our staff. I also heard earlier how Christina Fitch talked about how the board members...
Please wrap it up, Mr. Cashmary.
We've tried to set meetings with Christina Fitch, Lisa Borowski, Daryl Wu, and Jamie Villa, and we have...and our folks haven't heard back, so that's not true that you're always... I lean support on bottom of the cover.
Thank you, Ms. Cashmary. Next speaker?
Ingrid Hutchins.
Hi, my name is Ellen Chapman, and I'm speaking for Ingrid Hutchins tonight. I am a retired teacher. I live in the SAC City Unified District, and I'm a community member, and I'm a retired teacher from SAC City Unified. And for the last 10 years, I have run also a theater enrichment, after-school theater enrichment class at a K-8 school. And I have a little different perspective in that I'm thinking, in addition to the health and safety considerations, I'm happy to speak in support of this resolution, because in addition to that, I'm thinking about what the kids are not getting. I do not feel that I can go forward with a theater enrichment program at this point if there are not vaccine mandates in place. It is just not safe, given what you have to do in theater performance and the proximity of rehearsal. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution, and I urge the school board to vote yes on tonight's resolution for mandatory COVID vaccines and weekly testing for students and staff for the safety and enrichment of school kids.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jennifer Malone. John Myers.
Go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, let me start by saying, you know, my whole family is vaccinated, including all three of our eligible students. We're a very pro-vaccine family. However, it was really disappointing to see staff and Dr. Pan really exaggerate the COVID risk to children, instead of providing families with some, you know, some honest context. 20,000 hospitalizations nationwide and 500 deaths of children were mentioned, without mentioning there are 75 million youth in the U.S., and that these rates are below other common childhood traumas like car accidents. I mean, that's really useful information, and, you know, what was given was kind of, you know, spreading fear. Staff and Dr. Pan failed to note that right now there's just two kids in all of Sacramento County in the hospital out of 365,000 kids. And most troubling, as an earlier commenter mentioned, is about the risk of heart inflammation to younger boys. And it looks like the risk of that is very low, but the risk of COVID for younger boys is also very low. So it looks like, you know, we need to get more data on what's happening here, which is why the United Kingdom has...
Thank you, Mr. Myers, if you could please wrap it up.
UK has stuck with a single dose for 12- to 15-year-olds. So, you know, the science isn't quite settled. We urge the district to not vote for this, or the board not to vote for this mandate until we have better data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next speaker?
Teresa Weaver.
Hi, I am a community member and a concerned auntie of a student in the district. I'm strongly in favor of approving the mandate for vaccinations to protect our children's freedom and right to a safe learning environment and education. We are the great state of California's capital. We should be leading the way behind science, using evidence-based best practices. Healthcare workers have stepped up to beat COVID or fight COVID. Now it's our turn to take responsibility and step up to do our part as a community. We need to set the example to protect the health and safety of our amazing teachers and the children who depend on us by implementing a mandate. I would also like to express my gratitude for all the thoughtful and scientifically proven, recommended standards of resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Next speaker?
Janine Simak.
Sorry? Oh, okay. All right, how you doing?
Vincent, are you able to mute Rose Ramos? Rose, we can hear you. If you can mute yourself. There you go. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Simak, we apologize.
My name is Janine Simak, and my middle school daughter and I support this resolution for mandate for all students, teachers, and staff. We also support on-campus weekly testing for all vaccinated or unvaccinated. Once you provide a safe environment for our children, enrollment will increase, as families will no longer live in fear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simak. Next speaker?
Kristin Gori.
Gori, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. As a parent of an immunocompromised kindergarten who deserves to feel protected and safe at school and have as close to a normal life as you can during a pandemic, I ask you to please vote to pass the resolution, especially to mandate weekly testing for all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status. Based on the slides presented by your staff, only 10% of the district's student body is participating in voluntary testing. This is beyond disappointing that parents don't want to help protect other students in their community and utilize all of the mitigation measures available to them. Remember the Swiss cheese model, people. Surprised it didn't make appearance tonight? Thank you for your time and hard work on this. Please vote yes to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Gori. Next speaker?
Paramber Singh. Sarah Goller.
Hello, I'm speaking on me and five other parents, my husband, the Boatmans, and the Smiths.
Hey, you get five minutes, Ms. Goller. Go ahead.
Great. To even consider a vaccine mandate for students... To even consider a vaccine mandate for students is sheer tyranny. There is absolutely no reason to vaccinate students. Ages zero to 18 have a survival rate from COVID of 99.997%. I'll just say that I'm sorry those other parents are so misinformed, unfortunately. The COVID vaccine is under emergency authorization. The FDA did not approve the shot being used now. It got an approval on an application for a future vaccine. That was a lie by mainstream media. Let me reiterate, the shot does not prevent infection or transmission. They do masks. 37 kids have died in California since January 2020. That registers as 0% of the cases in that age group. 477 kids in America died from the flu in 2018 to 2019, and we didn't mandate flu vaccines, and we didn't test. The tests are a waste of time and money. Any viral load is possible of being tested as positive. For instance, the common cold. Even the FDA has recalled the PCR tests, which were never created to be used as a diagnostic tool in the first place. And I will say that I did say last meeting, Dr. Fulmek and his team proved in their case against the CDC that the shot violates all 10 of the Nuremberg codes. So remember, for instance, I can't say them all, but number four, it should be so conducted as to avoid all unnecessary physical and mental suffering and injury. Yet thousands of deaths and over a quarter million adverse events have occurred from the shot. These mandates go against our inalienable rights and our rights as Americans under the Constitution. There are Americans six feet under that fought for our republic to have freedom, and these plans attempt to disgrace and decimate that sacrifice. Parents should have the right to choose what they want best for their children's health. It should be not mandated by anybody. That is our right as parents. And Dr. Pan, I'm sorry, you, all your numbers are completely misrepresented. And flu vaccine with a COVID vaccine at the same time, Mrs. Flores? I'm sorry, there have been no studies done on that. Okay? And just recently, a leaked document from the DoD showed 60% of COVID cases are people that are fully vaccinated. So I feel like if you are going to vote yes on this, you're going to be like at the German train station where they're being shipped off to Auschwitz, and you're going to look the other way. Because this is how many people have the possibility of being injured. Okay? And we do know that kids are at a higher risk of injury from the vaccine than from the disease itself. All right? So I'm vehemently voting no on this mandate.
Thank you, Ms. Goller. Next speaker.
Crystal Straight.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? I apologize. Missing my cue.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I'm a parent here in Sacramento for a first grader who is not able to be immunized right now because of his age. And we go to school every day worried about what is going to happen. I do want to say I appreciate how much testing he is getting, but we need more protection than that. So I appreciate the first step being made today. I also just really want to call out and hope you hear how many parents, and I've been listening to these conversations all over the state, and it's amazing how many parents have shown up today to make sure that you hear how strongly we need protections for our kids so that they can stay in school learning safely. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Straight. Next speaker.
Kelly Stout.
Hi, my name is Kelly Stout. I'm a parent of a first grader in our district. I ask the district to please stop the trend of punishing the people following the science like the whole world has done throughout the pandemic. We have a safe and effective vaccine that will allow students to attend school in a safe and productive environment. Make the people who refuse to follow the science stay home. Kids can continue to learn through independent study, and unvaccinated teachers can be their independent study teachers. Kids continue to be the victim in this pandemic. Time after time throughout, the district has put their own priorities in front of our kids. Do the right thing, bring enrollment back to our district, mandatory weekly testing, and mandate vaccines. Please vote yes on the resolution.
Thank you, Stout. Next speaker.
David Fisher.
Good evening. I'm also coming in time, Nikia Malinsky. On September 22nd-
All right. Hold on, Mr. Fisher. We got two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. On September 22nd, SETA, we made a comprehensive proposal to the district that would mandate vaccinations for all students and staff. Our proposal, updated proposal we made early in August that would require the district to provide mandatory testing of all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status. While we are pleased this resolution has come forward, since the pandemic emerged in March 2020, Sac City under superintendent leadership has stalled and delayed taking steps to protect students and staff. Short few examples. When other school districts prudently transitioned to distance learning, Sac City delayed. When other school districts allowed their central staff to work from home, superintendent required classified staff to continue to work at the Cerner Center, forcing staff to take collective action to protect their health and well-being. When other school districts worked to ensure the school sites had proper ventilation and filtration, the superintendent and the district wasted $6 million on useless unproven air purifiers that now sit in some unused Sac City warehouse. When other school districts created virtual learning academies in the spring of 2021 to anticipate the needs of students who may not be able to return to in-person instruction, especially students with disabilities, superintendent and the district's bargaining team just simply ignored the recommendations from SETA to do the same. By the way, with the establishment of a viable independent study program, even more urgent before vaccinations can be mandated successfully. When other school districts have addressed the shortage of certificated staff and classified staff by offering wage increases, bonuses, and other incentives, Sac City is demanding a $750 cut in wages. And by the way, other districts certainly didn't needlessly lay off hundreds of certificated staff during a national teacher shortage. Always forget to mention that. Several other school districts in the state, as you know, have chosen to lead on this. It's time for the school board to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jennifer Baker.
Go ahead, Ms. Baker. Are you there? You are on mute, Ms. Baker. If you could please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My daughter was previously in David Lubin Elementary, an absolutely phenomenal school. She's now in independent study. While the program was off to a rocky start, Anne, as you know, still has a number of bumps in the road to drive through. Her teacher, Ingrid Hutchins, has helped her and her classmates to quickly get up to speed and is doing an absolutely phenomenal job. I've been impressed with the quality of the teaching and the collaboration she and the school are doing to help our kids. Our desire is to have our daughter back at David Lubin, but that can't happen if we don't feel it's safe. Solely through mandatory vaccinations, regular testing, and the continued wearing a mask will we feel comfortable enough to send her back to the classroom with her peers. As leaders in education, our district needs to follow the science and the advice of medical professionals such as Dr. Pan. Please keep our kids safe by supporting tonight's resolution, and thank you for being willing to do the right thing for our community and our kids. If George Washington could mandate vaccines, so can you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next speaker.
Davina Paglialunga.
You're on mute. If you could please unmute yourself. Can you repeat her name one more time?
Davina Paglialunga.
Pagliana? Can you please unmute yourself? Okay, we will get back to her. Next speaker.
Davina was the last speaker, President Pritchett.
Davina was the last speaker. All right. And it looks like she's still muted, unfortunately. Okay. All right. With that, I will open this up for a board comment. I do have a couple of questions. First off, I just wanted to make sure that this is clear, that this is not a vote to force a vaccine mandate because that was already, this mandate already is coming down from the governor. This resolution is a timeline of when our district will have this vaccine mandate. The questions I have are on page 17. Under the communications, we'll reach out to parents and guardians, students, staff, and partners, and community members via website updates and electronic letters and notifications. I'm wondering if we're also going to be sending out notifications via backpack? Or how are we going to be able to reach individuals that may not have access to receive electronic letters and notifications?
Thank you for the question, President Pritchett. The communication strategy will be all-encompassing. We do need to make sure that our families get this information in different languages as well, through different mediums. Certainly, we'll use social media. We'll use e-connections. We'll use, we can use printed material as well that can go home with, to families from our students. And any other ideas that you might have. Our team has been working on this and certainly provide you with a comprehensive summary through a board communication of what that communication strategy would entail.
Okay. And then on page 20, under the COVID testing capacity for two health aides at every site to manage symptomatic and exposure testing. Are these, Ms. Flores, I think you're still on. Are these two health aides at every site? Are they full-time health aides? And how often are they at school sites?
Yeah, so they're there every day during the school hours. So they each kind of rotate their schedules. One will start a little earlier, one a little later. And they provide testing during the school day as needed. You know, if anyone's symptomatic or becomes symptomatic or has an exposure, whether it happened at the school or they learn about it later, staff as well, as well as, you know, any other partners that are on those campuses or expanded learning partners, they all can avail themselves of that COVID testing. One of the things we're realized is they're very busy. So that's why we're working on those testing teams to go out and do that routine surveillance testing. Those health aides will assist in pulling, you know, students and really monitoring any positive results that we get.
Okay. And so if this resolution is passed, or a form of this resolution is passed, are those health aides available to sign off on personal exemptions?
We're going to be developing a whole process for that, you know, similar to what we're doing for staff as well. And so, you know, yes, if we have a role for them to assist, we know that there'll be families who are going to need probably some technical assistance, and we've been thinking through those processes.
Yeah, and not just that. I want to make sure that it's very accessible for families. You know, if I think of like in my area, if I have a family that's in Rancho Cordova, if we said that they had to come to the Cerner Center, that would be like three bus rides to get here, which can be very expensive for families, as you can imagine. All right. And then one more question. I'll get to my board, because I still have a lot more, but I want to hear from my colleagues as well. On page 35. You know what? Actually, you already answered that question for me. It was about the exemptions. All right. Perfect. All right. We will get to our board, and then I have some other things. Member Morowski?
Sure. Thank you so much, President Pritchett. And thanks so much to staff across the district who have put together this very thoughtful and comprehensive proposal. Just right off the bat, I want to say, Victoria Flores, you're my hero. And thank you for all you're doing and all you have done for us and for our kids. My kids are eight and 10 and look very much forward to getting vaccinated, hopefully very soon. So we are excited to, you know, be part of, not just protecting themselves, but protecting their community. So I, you know, I think I heard a lot of, a lot of things said today, tonight, that I don't want to, you know, harp on or repeat everything that folks said in support. There were a lot of really excellent points made. We did also hear some misinformation. So I think it's just very important to kind of correct the record on a couple of things. And important for our community to know, to know where we stand on this. So, you know, to my mind, you know, our public schools already mandate a large number of vaccines for communicable disease to protect our children and to stop transmission. COVID-19, adding that to the list is kind of a no-brainer for me. We have a safe and effective vaccine, and there is a pandemic that is still kind of raging through our communities. Millions of kids who have already received this vaccine all over the country, all over the world. It's, there were some comments made today about the risks of the vaccine versus the risks of COVID. There was some misinformation shared about that. So I just want to reiterate and draw your attention to, I think, the comments from Dr. Bloomberg, who is the pediatric infectious disease doctor at UC Davis, who talks about the vaccine side effect versus COVID. And he says, "I've heard concerns about vaccine side effects, including the rare occurrence of heart inflammation, et cetera. This is incredibly rare. And in fact, the risk of myocarditis, which is one of the heart conditions, the risk is much higher for unvaccinated children who may get myocarditis from the COVID-19 infection compared to the risk of vaccination." For any parent concerned about myocarditis, vaccinating their child is the best way to protect them. So just want to emphasize that, that the risk of COVID itself, we know the science has proved that it's far greater than the very, very small risk of the vaccine. So just a couple other things that I think are important. There is zero risk of catching COVID-19 from the vaccine. All it does is train our bodies how to fight the disease. Universal vaccines will let us relax. A lot of the other restrictions that we have been forced to put into place to keep our kids safe, so the sooner we can get there, the sooner we can get back to normal and have, you know, dances and field trips and events and things, because we'll have that extra layer of safety. Students can skip quarantine. That was a point that was made. That is really, really important. We've had enough disruption, so all our students can skip quarantine if they're vaccinated and they get exposed. And lastly, universal vaccination that creates a layer of community safety in schools that is far greater than what we can do as individuals. So it's just, it's about being part of that community. What we can all do for each other is stronger than what we can kind of decide all as individuals on our own. So a couple of comments about just the operation of this. I am pretty concerned about these next couple of months for our administrators. I know, you know, that our schools have been very burdened by, you know, the contact tracing and the, you know, the managing quarantines and all of those things. And I think those things are going to get much, much, much better once we get through to the other side of this and have, and have the vast majority of our students vaccinated. But over these next few weeks, I think, you know, they will, they will be pretty challenged to respond, to kind of cover all of the, all of the COVID-related things and all, you know, processing these, vaccination, just operationalizing this. So I just want to really encourage the superintendent to do everything we can to provide as much support, you know, on a short-term basis as possible to help just get through, you know, all of those operational challenges. I would also like to request just reporting back to the board, you know, regularly as we get towards the November 30th date, just to keep us updated on, you know, on some of, more of the operational details of what's happening and where we are. I have one question I wanted to ask if, just to confirm on the operational side. Are we talking about by November 30th, having a full vaccination by November 30th? So either two, like if the second dose of a two-shot series or the first dose of a one-shot series? So I don't know if that's a question for maybe Mrs. Flores.
Yeah, so our benchmark by November 30th- Yeah. So, so our benchmark by November thirtieth was at least one dose because we know you're then on the pathway.
Okay.
Getting that second dose. And we can track that, right? If you've submitted your first dose by then, we'll reach out, we'll do that outreach. And we don't want to be punitive, right? If, if something has gone on, um, in getting that second dose, we're going to help those families navigate those situations. So that's why we said first or second.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it's just, um, at least one dose by, by November thirtieth. Preferably the second, if you can get in there early enough. But, okay. No, thank you for that clarification. Um, that's, that's important to know. So we just have kind of one date to, to think about. Okay. Well, I mean, I just, I think this, this whole last, this pandemic era, it's really an era, it's not a point in time. It's gone on for far too long already. And it's been horrible for our kids. Um, it's resulted in this disruption and, and declines of, you know, their skills and their relationships and routines and everything. And, and I just feel like to my fellow board members that we have the power now to make this stop in our schools and to get to a, a, just a whole nother level where we can get through this. So this is the moment when we need to come together and, and use that power to keep our kids safe. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Can I ask, um, what our legal authority on emergency use authorization is? Anyone that can answer that question? Raoul?
Well, I guess that may be to me, President Pritchett, I'm not really sure in terms of, um, what you're asking for there. Uh, it, the, the vaccine has been, um, provided emergency use authorization. So it can be taken by, by children and, and people in those age groups. So I don't know what else I could.
I guess what I'm asking is, is if we have a legal authority, um, to mandate a vaccination that is still an emergency use authorization?
Yeah. I don't think there's any reason that, that, that I know of that would, uh, delineate between, you know, emergency use and full use in terms of what the district, uh, district's authority would, would be to, to require. Of course, you know, we're not requiring any would be vaccinated. We're requiring that for, uh, you know, in-person attendance, uh, absence and exemption that, um, that one would, who's eligible, uh, for that vaccine received it. So, um,
Okay.
That's the best way I can answer it. Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, you know, I, speaking for someone that is vaccinated, um, I am really struggling with this decision tonight. And on one hand, I want to crush this pandemic out. And on the other hand, I ask, who are we as school board members to tell parents that their children have to get an emergency use vaccination that hasn't been fully approved by the FDA? As you know, history should have taught us a long time ago that when you force Americans to do something, there's usually great feat, great pushback. Um, I also do feel that we're take, that we're not taking into considerations, um, the other precautions that were presented by the superintendent, um, like our independent study program that needs some serious, um, some serious help. Um, the, the loss of students, the loss of ADA, which means it could mean in turn the loss of jobs. Um, you know, I went, um, I, you know, I've spoken to a couple board members, I know I, they know, you know, I I'm the voice of my constituents, I've gone out into my community, I've had meetings, I've spoken with, with parents. And many of, of the community members that I've, that I've talked to stated that they will remove their students and either homeschool them or place them in private schools. Um, and so we need to take all of this into account. And I wish we could say that it's just a matter of getting a vaccination or not, but there's so many other things that are intertwined within this. Um, our students have had over a year of exclusion and not up to par, that was not up to par, um, education when they were at home. Um, now that they're finally back to some normalcy, I feel like we're almost going to make it harder for a lot of our students to be back into the classroom. And that just crushes me, to be honest. Um, you know, I would like to ask the board to reconsider the resolution language and to follow the governor's recommendation on the vaccine mandate. I know it's about a month's difference, uh, when I look at the date. Um, so this will allow additional time to be able to put, um, our independent studies program, um, on, you know, high alert with our, um, superintendent and staff and work with our labor partners. Um, we saw that, you know, there's many positions that are, that need to be filled. So, um, until then, I ask that this board reconsider this resolution. Um, Member Garcia, go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you. Well, I, I'm listening to your request and I am going to respectfully decline your request to reconsider the resolution and align it more with the timeline from the governor's, um, proposal. The vaccination mandate is required. The question before the board is, what timeline is this board choosing to implement the required vaccination mandate? Um, the vaccination mandate applies to all schools, public, private, et cetera. So the request to delay doesn't mean that parents will have other options. We are giving parents an option, vaccinate or, um, join the, um, independent study program. We need to know what the demand is, and we don't know what that demand is until we start moving forward with a vaccination mandate. Um, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we clarify what is before the board today. It's just, do we implement, accelerate this timeline now? Or do we wait until July? The governor stated that local public health and school officials are encouraged to move forward with their own vaccination requirements and may accelerate the vaccine requirements. Going back to a point that Board Member Murawski stated, our kids have already suffered without being in schools for over eighteen months. Many of them are staying out because they don't feel safe enough to return to in-person instruction. We've already established or implementing many mitigation strategies that unfortunately have not brought confidence to our families so that they can send in their kids. And there's nothing more that we can do. We've already used every single tool in the toolbox with the exception of the hammer, which is a vaccine mandate. And now it's time to use it. We can't be afraid. I mean, that is legislating, making policy out of fear. We can't be afraid. We can't be afraid with, um, with what's going to happen. Um, families leaving, I, I wholly, I wholeheartedly agree with many of the public speakers, including Dr. Penn. I believe that our families will come back because they're going to feel safer. That our kids are going to want to come back because they know that they're going to be around people who have been vaccinated. So they're not going to expose grandparents who are living with them and they are the caretakers. I just don't understand why we would be talking about a delay. We're delaying another school year. Essentially, our kids will be, will lose another entire academic year if we delay this decision to align it to the governor's proposed timeline. That's two years of not having adequate instruction. That's too long. I would like to, um, thank staff for all the hard work they've done. The resolution is comprehensive. It's clear. It provides the necessary flexibility for the superintendent to make the necessary adjustments as we encounter the ever-evolving COVID-19 and its variants. We don't know what's around the corner. We don't know what the winter months will bring. We're entering into a flu, a flu season. There are more Delta, uh, COVID-19 variants. We just don't know. So without, uh, without requiring vaccines for all eligible people, then we will not be even on par to try to control the, the, the pandemic. I mean, we're going to continue to be behind and our kids are going to continue to suffer. We're going to continue to provide an unstable learning environment because of transmission, because of quarantines, because whatever you can think under the sun. I just, I just wholeheartedly am thinking about the question that the superintendent posed about. What do we, when we look back, what do I want to tell people? I want to tell people that I did every single thing within my power, authority and obligation and responsibility to make sure that I provided the safest learning environment for kids so that kids can be in school in person and that they can stay there. And I am prepared to vote on this resolution with pride and with urgency. And I welcome my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Phillips?
I guess I should move my camera over here, too. Um, I just want to make sure that we remember who the marginalized are and who's going to be affected by the, the mandate and our resolution to somewhat enforce that mandate. Marginalized isn't necessarily just your black and brown folks. This is our students receiving special education services, our LGBTQIA+ community. You name it, they're out there. And I really feel that the mandate is something that we should be following. I don't have an issue with that. But I just want to make sure that we recognize that there are other folks who are still going to be not left out, but are going to be put in a position where they would have to seek information in order to get things done. So, you know, basically, basically we're leaving folks out reading this report and reading what, you know, the PowerPoint. If you don't use snail mail, just like, you know, Madam President said, if you're not stapling them to the kids' backpacks, whatever you have to do to get that information home, we have to really focus on the fact that we are, again, ignoring the marginalized. Um, those who are in the position to mandate immunization have to exercise their ability to accept humility. I don't think that we touch on humility enough. But I will speak specifically for, you know, poor and marginalized black and brown folks. We're going to continue to be left out and what feels to me to be ignored with respect to those who are working diligently to actualize our processes. I do understand that. But to, uh, Trustee Garcia's point, grandparents, y'all know we got families that live in a house and you have two or three families that live in one house together. Grandmas there, grandpas there, aunties, uncles, babies, people who may not be able to get immunized or get the vaccination. So I know we're doing the best that we can by making sure that we are upholding what's been sent down from the Capitol. I don't have an issue with voting yes for this. I just want to make sure that we recognize as a district that we've got to stop ignoring folks. We have to start making sure that we are paying attention to everyone who's going to be touched by this. And, you know, when we look at immunization clinics or we have them at Hiram, we have them everywhere. I'm going to say it again, I don't have, uh, a middle school in my area. I do have a continuation school. Can we come across and make some kind of way to have clinics at a smaller, uh, smaller venue? Because you could hit Oak Park, you could hit South Oak Park, North Oak Park, you could hit us all if you actually came to that area. So, you know, this is fantastic. This is a great resolution. With the exception of the fact that there are people who are going to pull their kids out. We need to be comfortable with the fact that they're going to pull their kids out. But I bet you a hundred bucks, you know, I can find a lot of people in my area, even though all of our areas are, you know, we share everything. I don't think you're going to have a lot of folks pulling their kids out of school if school is, it, all they have in terms of, I mean, childcare. There's a lot of things that have people keep their kids in school. I don't see someone who works two jobs taking off from one job to homeschool their children. I don't see it happening. So I think we need to make sure that we are being more inclusive for everyone who's going to be affected by this. I, I, I can't say it any, any stronger than that. We need to accept our humility. But, um, we did talk about accountability. And I think that this falls into one of those, um, sections of that. So just remember, there's other people out there. But like I said, I do know people's rights are important and they want them to be heard and they want to be able to exercise them. And the district must be comfortable with the fact that we will lose people. But I think that we'll also gain many of our children back who are in, uh, independent studies and maybe homeschool. So, um, I will be voting yes to this resolution.
Thank you. Member Villa?
I will keep my comments short. But I will just say, I agree with, um, President Pritchett. Um, I really struggle with this. I've talked to a lot of folks in my community and this is in line with what Member Phillips just indicated. My area, how we're going to make sure that all of those folks who don't necessarily have the same access as other districts are taken care of. That communication piece is huge to me, advocating for everybody in our district and not just the loud folks in the room who want this. I'm, I'm really struggling with, again, I know it's come down from the Capitol, as Member Phillips had said, but it, it's hard for me to say that I'm going to make that decision for other folk. I am concerned about the staffing issue of independent study. You know, we're rolling this out pretty quick and, um, I, this is just going to create, I understand, you know, that we need to do this, but also how are we going to, how, how are our staff, how can we support them? There's already so much on their plate. It really concerns me that we're going to be adding this very heavy load to them of, you know, making sure that they are verifying vaccination for all of our students. Well, assuming the students and staff that are eligible. Like I said, I really, what Member, President Pritchett said, I agree with that. What Member Phillips said, exactly how I feel. I'll leave it at that. And, uh, if anybody else has any more to say, um, this is a hard one, but our kids have just been through so much and our families have been through so much.
Thank you, Member Villa. Do we have any other, or, number Rose?
Um, okay. So, uh, looking at the, the, um, resolution we have in front of us today and hearing, uh, public comment and hearing from, uh, my colleagues, um, and from staff, I, uh, I do appreciate, um, all of the information. Um, and, and I also want to kind of echo, um, kind of what Member Murawski had said when we need to think about, uh, the supports for the, on, on the site level as well. They have been dealing with a lot. I would say a principal today said they wanted to come and listen into the meeting, but they couldn't make it because there'll be contact tracing. Um, and so that means if our meeting started at five-thirty and they got out of school around three, um, they knew that they're going to be contact tracing with, to, into the night. Um, so the supports, um, that our principals and, and school site staff, teachers, are going to be needing is going to be, uh, have to be a priority, um, for our board, for our district, um, and, um, for our, uh, team here. Um, and also, I would like to say that, um, you guys hear me say it often, but, um, I strongly believe that strong schools build strong neighborhoods and communities. Um, and that's just not, we're not just talking about, uh, education. Um, we're, we're talking about safety, we're talking about health. Um, you know, we want to build a place, a school site that, that helps for our communities. Um, and we know what the numbers are around a lot of our school sites, um, with COVID cases. And we know what it could look like, um, if a lot of, a lot of our staff and students are vaccinated. And so I look forward, uh, to, to voting on this tonight. Um, I look forward to actualizing. Um, and so I look forward, uh, to, to voting on this tonight. Um, I look forward to actualizing or getting closer to actualizing the idea of, uh, strong schools being, building strong neighborhoods and community. Um, and to continue moving forward to, uh, making our school sites, uh, community hubs, not only a place for great education, but where youth development, health and, um, social services. So I thank you guys for your time and I look forward, uh, to voting on this tonight.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Member Wu?
May I suggest, um, the third be further, be it further resolved, uh, where it says ages, students aged, uh, five through 11, subject to the superintendent's discretion. Could we make it, um, five through 15? Uh, 16 through 17, 18 is mandatory, but, um, five, five through 12 is not available or five through 11 is not available yet. And 12 through six, 12 through
Fifteen.
15 is, uh, on emergency use approval. Those who are, will get it, will get it. Those who, um, um, between 12 and 15, those who will get it, will get it. Those who are, uh, on the border, uh, will just choose to be tested then.
Member Wu, are you putting a motion on the table for this or?
Yes.
Okay. So your motion is to approve the resolution with the, um, with the change of five through 15?
Five through 15.
He, uh, yeah, he asked, yeah. All right. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All right. We are open for discussion. Member Murawski?
Well, on, on this particular motion, um, I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate the, uh, the point you raised, um, Vice President Wu. A cou- couple of things I, I would want to bring to the table on that. Um, I, I have, um, done, you know, I, I have investigated this issue, um, a bit because I, I had the same kind of question, right? Of what does emergency use authorization mean versus, um, versus full approval? There is no, no one I could find in terms of like epidemiologists, medical professionals, um, American Academy of Pediatrics, all of the, you know, kind of the, the people who, who you would look to for, for such a recommendation. None of them have concerns about safety or efficacy for the emergency use authorization. In fact, the, you know, the, as the presentation references, the AAP recommends, uh, 12 and up. Um, I, CDC recommends 12 and up. Um, those, that's, that is more of a, um, I don't know, a administrative process. It's not a question of whether the, the vaccine is, is safe and efficacious. And another thing that I would say about, about that is ages 12 and, uh, ages 12, 12 through 15, say, for whom it's, um, available now, millions of, millions of kids have already gotten vaccinated, um, in that age range. So, and, and we haven't seen a lot of, um, you know, uh, high number of, of, of issues or anything. So I just, you know, I, I understand the, you know, that the terminology, uh, may, may raise, may raise some concerns. Um, but I, I guess I would also put that we are in a public health emergency, right? And it is authorized for that purpose, you know? Um, we do have full, you know, full approval for measles and other vaccines that have been around for a while. Um, those, those diseases are not front and center like threatening our, our students' academic and, you know, and life and, and their health. Um, we are still in an emergency. So, um, that's what I, I would, I would bring to the table on that. And, um, so I would, I would really, you know, just strongly recommend and ask my board members to support the, um, the resolution just, just as it is. And it does allow for, for a personal belief exemption if someone does feel strongly that they don't want it. Um, it, it does, it does already allow for that. It does allow a lot of discretion, um, uh, at the administrative level with the superintendent to, um, be, you know, be flexible to respond to changing circumstances. So that would be, that would be my, um, my recommendation.
Do we have any other board session on the motion on the table? Did you want to talk again, Members? Okay. All right. And I do want to make something very clear that I am not against the vaccination. I don't want that, uh, the, I don't want the community to think that that is the case. As I said, I am vaccinated, um, by choice. Um, what I'm asking for is, um, more time to implement for our students. Um, but we do have a motion on the table. Um, and we have a second and the superintendent. Can I keep please?
Member Pritchett?
I'm abstaining.
Member Murawski?
No.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
No.
Member Villa?
No.
Member Rhodes?
No.
Member Phillips?
No.
Okay. And no's have it. I have another motion on the table. Member Garcia? What was that? Oh, I apologize. All right. We, Member Murawski?
If we're done. You have? Mm-hmm. So I just.
Turn my mic on. Oh, so sorry. So sorry. I was, I was just saying, yeah, I know, I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I just wanted to validate, um, Member Phillips' point about just making, uh, taking the needs of, of marginalized communities into account as we, as we operationalize this. And, um, just want to request that we offer, uh, that, that increased support, um, and outreach and, um, you know, making it really easy to get vaccinated, making it really easy to get the information that folks need. And, um, I also really, um, approve of the idea of sending out snail mail. You know, I think it's really effective way to just reach people. And I know, you know, I see it more than electronic and I think a lot of people do. So, um, any way we can think about, you know, uh, how, how to make it easier. Um, I really appreciate that point. So just wanted to say that. Um, and to Member Villa's point, I think, you know, like I said, I think this, this, this requirement is ultimately going to take a huge burden off of our administrators and our schools. I, I truly, truly believe that because it is going to make us so much more safe. It is going to have so much less COVID and quarantines and tracking and all of that stuff. Like it's, you know, it's kind of wonderful place to, to get to, right? I know these, these like few weeks are, are going to be hard with the extra work, but I think, you know, it's one of those things that will be so, so worth it um, once we get, once we get through it. Um, and, um, to President Pritchett's point, you know, you know, I, I respect you. I respect, you know, all your, your constituents, your community. Um, and you and I have had many conversations about just the, you know, when, when you kind of, when you step back and say, you know, what's the right thing for the kids, you know? And I know where your heart is and I, I truly, truly feel that, that this, that moving forward is the right choice for the kids. And, um, so with that, I would want to move the, um, the resolution forward.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. I have a motion and a second on the table and, uh, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Abstaining.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Garcia? Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Uh, yes.
All right. Motion passed. So thank you, Board, and thank you for the good dialogue. All right. With that, we're at 5.0 adjournment. I got a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a great night.